Okie dokie, it is seven o'clock. I'd like to call this regular meeting in the Germantown Township trustees to order. Will you rise with the pleasure of agents?
My pleasure, agents. To the life of United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in its soul, with every being has us for all.
Thank you. Mark, could we have the roll call?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Dr. Cross?
Here.
Mr. Stubbs?
Here.
Mr. Potter?
Here.
All are present.
Do we have any visitor comments? Mr. Wine, I'm going to put you in Mr. Potter's report when we get to that.
Okay.
Just so you know. Anybody else? Mark?
Nope.
Let's go to fiscal officers' report.
Now, this is the circus. We've got to this point. Start my video.
If we have fiscal office.
It will not be, just for you, Mr. Potter. Okay, let's begin. So, first thing I've given you is the minutes for last month's meeting on August 12th. Are there any corrections or changes? I did not see any.
I didn't see none.
I have a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes on a 12:24 regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I've attached, or I sent you, the August financial reports, which is the end of the month fund status, the year-to-date through the end of August cash summary by fund, the month of August cash summary by fund, the August receipts, and the August payments. And there are several items I want to note. The first one is receipt number 212 for $489,966.72 from the Montgomery County Auditor. This was an advance on the second half taxes. Now, I mention that because then on September 6th, we received another $486,774 from the auditor, which is the settlement for the second half taxes. Now, I have not yet received a homestead and a rollback payment from the state of Ohio, which will be in the amount of $84,859.54. That should come later this month or in early October, and once I receive that, I will remit the appropriate tax payments to the city of Germantown. The second one is receipt number 219 for $60,000 from the state of Ohio, and that is the grant award for the Twin Creek Erosion Project, as submitted by Representative Tom Young on our behalf, and included in the state's one-time Strategic Community Investments Grant Program. Receipt 221 for $36,628.79 from Valley View Local School District is the first payment for 2024-2025 School Resource Officer Services. The second payment, which will be an equal amount, is due by the end of December. Receipt number 224 for $18,000 from the state of Ohio is the annual cell tower lease payment. And receipt number 247 for $11,446,090 from Star Ohio is the August interest at 5.42%. And I mention that because I anticipate that the rate's going to decrease in September, assuming that the Federal Reserve lowers the benchmark rate later this month, which everyone seems to predict will happen. voucher number 700 for $50,000 and voucher number 705 for $50,709.60 to Ray Hensley Inc. is for the 2024 chip seal program. The approved amount was the total of those, and I had to make those, that payment in two payments, because First National Bank will not issue a check in excess of $100,000. And Mr. Holbrook is going to discuss the Ray Hensley contract during his report. And finally, warrant number 50793 for $30,000 to the city of Germantown is the city share of the $60,000 Twin Creek State Grant. Any questions on the financials?
I think that was the perfect opportunity to keep your 15% administrative fee.
If you would like to so order that, I've already made the payment, but I could take it out of the next payment.
I would just like to, I mean, it's ridiculous that they do it. I'm not advocating for doing it at all, but I just think it's ridiculous that they do it, so that's all I'd like to add.
I think that's recently become an issue a little more public. So, we'll hear about that, I think, later in this meeting. Any other comments or questions? If not, can I ask for a motion to approve the financial reports and authorize the payment of August bills?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the August financial reports and authorize the payment of August bills. Warrants 50790 through 50793 and vouchers 644 through 732 for payroll and direct deposit, tax withholding, and other electronic payments.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, as I just noted, during August, we received the annual cell tower lease payment from the state of Ohio. And for many years, U.S. trustees and your predecessors had recorded that lease payment in the general fund. However, last year, you decided to move the payment to the police fund. You wish to do so again, and I, this year, I'd like to use a resolution to do that. And if you are in a position where you want to make that as an ongoing change, then let's go ahead and put that into the resolution.
What number is that, Mark?
We're going to make that resolution 57.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Resolution 2024-57, a resolution directing the fiscal officer to record the 2024 $18,000 cell tower rent into the Police District Fund, number 2081, and to record the cell tower rent into the Police District Fund, number 2018, on a continuing basis.
Second. So, continuing basis, okay.
Yes.
That way. That'll make it easy. We won't have to talk about this every year. Any discussion of the resolution?
The intent of the money from the cell tower lease was to offset, originally to offset, actually, it was just supposed to offset dispatching. And then the county ripped us off a few years later, and this is what, so the money there is, should help offset dispatching, so that's why it should go to the police fund, and that's where it should be.
Any other discussion? None, I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2024-57 is adopted. As I also noted a little bit ago, we received the $60,000 payment from the state of Ohio for the Twin Creek Erosion Project. And of course, our $30,000, our portion was $30,000, and that has been, well, let me go back. Originally, when we made that payment to channel maintenance, our portion, the $30,000, was paid using American Rescue Plan Act funds. Mark? Now, with the, with the grant money coming in, I put the $30,000 back into the ARCA fund, so it now has a balance of $43,307.26. Now, you have committed already, two different expenditures using ARCA fund money, and neither one of those has yet been paid. First one is the $27,643 for the police radio upgrades, and the second one is the $5,000 to Randy King to paint the township hall exterior. So, our unallocated ARCA funds now total $10,664.1. This amount must be here, Mark, by the end of December, or the funds will likely need to be returned to the Treasury Department. So, that's just information for you to, to know what you can still spend using the fund. All right. We finally have received the final report from the Auditor of States 2022-2023, agreed upon procedures review. That was done earlier this year. I sent you a copy in your report, and Ms. Close has already posted a hyperlink to the report on the township website, so anyone who would like, any resident or anyone else would like to read it, just go to the homepage of the website. Okay. Let's see, the next item is a resolution that you do every year, accepting the property tax amounts and rates for tax year '25. This resolution then gets sent to the Montgomery County Auditor and still fills our obligations in this regard. In what I sent you, a draft resolution, I also sent you the estimated 2025 property tax revenues. So, the resolution, I think you can do just by summary title, and I've given you that information. We'll make that number 58.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Resolution 2024-58, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor for 2025?
Yes. Okay. Second. Any discussion of the resolution? Hearing that, I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2024-58 is adopted. I'm going to read this one in its entirety. "We have now received the ballot language for the four mil fire EMS additional levy, which will be on the November ballot." It is quite lengthy. It is also one sentence long. So, this is how it will read when the voters go to the polls.
Deep breath, Mark.
Can I do it in one breath? I don't think so. "An additional tax for the benefit of Germantown Township for the purpose of providing and maintaining fire apparatus, mechanical resuscitators, underwater rescue and recovery equipment, or other fire equipment and appliances, buildings and sites therefore, or sources of water supply and materials therefore, for the establishment and maintenance of lines of fire alarm communications, for the payment of firefighting companies, or permanent, part-time, or volunteer firefighting, emergency medical service administrative or communications personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel under Section 145.48 or 742.34 of the revised code, for the purpose of ambulance equipment, for the provision of ambulance paramedic or other emergency medical services operated by a fire department or firefighting company, or for the payment of other related costs that the county auditor estimates will collect $1,184,000 annually at a rate not exceeding four mils for each $1 of taxable value, which amounts to $140 for each $100,000 of the county's auditors' appraised value for a continuing period of time commencing in 2024, first due in calendar year 2025." Yeah. Thank you. I don't imagine any voter is going to read to the very last line.
They'll read the last one.
Okay, go on. The line that says, vote yes?
No. How much it's going to cost?
How much it's going to cost. Okay. So, the next item. "I was contacted by Miami Valley Lighting about the renewal of the township's five-year contract for street lighting." I didn't know anything about this contract, other than the fact that we make an annual payment to Miami Valley Lighting. I've given you the attached proposed 2025, 20, sorry, 2025 through 2029 five-year contract, and that was provided to us by Miami Valley Lighting. I've also given you the prior contract, which covered 2020 through 2024. If you're ready to approve this contract tonight, let's use a resolution. Again, I really don't know much about this. Dr. Cross and Mr. Stubbs, you were both trustee on the board the last time this contract was approved. You probably know more about it than I do. Mr. Holbrook may know more about it.
For the street lights that are located throughout the township. So, there's?
Six.
Six? I guess I thought, but so. And just for the record, I think Miami Valley does do a pretty good job repairing those, what we call, in the whole. So, yeah.
And they upgraded those a couple of years ago. Indeed, didn't they?
They did not.
They did not. They were.
I got a couple, yeah, I got a couple comments.
Yeah. But I never, I don't think they did.
In fact, they've given us the option if we want to add that as an additional cost.
So, just for some information, the changes in the new contract weren't a whole lot, but they, now we pay annually, I guess before it was semi-annually, twice as, twice.
Paying annually.
Okay, well, that hasn't changed. So, now, they have, prices will be adjusted in year two and year four for inflation, at least an increase of 3%, but not more than 8%. Prices adjusting in June for the next calendar year, so they kind of put that inflation right into it now, as far as into the contract. No fixtures currently have LED lights, and we have six fixtures. I talked, and changing all the fixtures to LED would cost $600, but it would lower our annual cost to 70, by $77, so, meaning it would take over seven years to get that back. The guy I talked to was the guy on the, the email there, Mr. Michelson. He didn't really think, saw no big need to change it out, change the amount now. He said, "If some of the, you know, sodium lights go bad, they'll put LED lights in there." And he say, he said that maybe when he got two or three, you know, sodium lights left, then he may want to change it out. He said, unfortunately, they, they thought they were going to be a lot less maintenance, but they haven't completed that, that they're still having some problems with it. So, total cost for 2025, just the, year 2025 is going to be $1,545.84 with the current high-pressure sodium fixtures. So, you know, if we're happy with the service, and the only thing I have to do is, page eight, this, the customer, they likes to have all Cobra head fixtures change LED, which we were not going to plan on doing. The customer defers an election at this time, but they may, may make an election by separate written request at a later time during the term of disagreement, which would probably look to be checked off.
Yeah. So, the 2025 amount is exactly to the penny what we paid for 2024.
Oh, okay.
So, they are not increasing it in the future.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll increase it next year. So, if we're comfortable with that, I don't see any reason to not hold off on not accepting their proposal.
Yeah, I'm good with doing it tonight.
Good.
Someone likes to make that.
What resolution is that, 59?
It's going to be 59.
I would like to introduce Resolution 2024-59, a resolution to appear, approve the street lighting agreement between Miami Valley Lighting and Germantown Township commencing on January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2029. So, try to view this again.
Second. Any discussion of the resolution? Hearing that, I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution 2024-59 is adopted, and I will sign that. Or actually, Dr. Cross, you may want to sign that tonight.
Okay.
It's on page nine.
I don't have that.
Well, let me pass it down to you.
I'll sign it, yeah.
And I will send that off to them. Okay, while he's signing that, I will let you know that along with Dr. Cross, I attended the August 22nd Montgomery County Township Association meeting, and that was held at the Jefferson Township offices. Nice building, nice meeting room, and they did provide a nice dinner for us, so, another, another good meeting. The next MCTA meeting will be the annual Holiday Gala, which is held every year at the Mandoline Banquet Center, and this year it'll be on November 21st.
Send my back, we thank you.
A reminder also that next month's trustee meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 8th, and this is one day later than normal due to the Columbus Day falling on our regular meeting night. And with that, I am done. Thank you very much.
All right, good. Thank you, Mark. Police Department report?
It'll be quick. Monthly stats, total models driven by our officers this month, this past month, was 6,555. Total dispatches was 127, with 124 cases closed. We had 10 case follow-ups, three arrests. We did 445 business checks, 68 vacant house checks, and 1,022 occupied house checks. We had six crashes, 45 citation, I'm sorry, 45 traffic stops and 22 citations. On flipping issues, we had a cruiser, we had to replace two front tires. We took it back to Carol Wurfs, and they covered that because it was an alignment issue with their, their machine, so they paid for the two new tires for us. Monthly information, October 1st, mention this again, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., we're having our National Light Out event at the Valley View High School. We're excited about this event this year. We're trying a lot of new things, trying to make it bigger and better with more space available. So, from what I understand, we did get a dump tank. Is that right, Charlie?
We did.
We did get a dump tank.
I'm very excited about that.
So, I think that'll make a lot of people happy, especially.
It is Officer Marsden.
He's, he's.
He's so graciously agreed to do.
Put a lot of ice in the water.
I planned on it.
Part-time Officer Gettr has been released from FTO. He's doing a fantastic job. He's got 20 years law enforcement experience with 25-plus years' service as a lieutenant in the Westchester Fire Department. So, he's really, he's doing a good job for us. I'm really excited about him and the way he handles things. He's doing great.
What does FTO stand for?
Field Training. It's basically Field Training Officer.
Field Training Officer.
Yeah. So, he was released from that. He goes from Field Training to Shadow Car, and then they're Shadow Car for a couple weeks or a month, depending on how they do with their Shadow Car. That means they answer calls, and then another officer comes out and just kind of watches, sees how they do. And on that note, Officer Stevens has graduated from FTO into the Shadow Car process, and he's doing a fantastic job as well. He's got a great attitude. Both of them, they're excellent hires. The way, how hard it is to find officers right now, I'm extremely pleased with the level of aptitude that our officers have for this line of work, so I'm really thrilled there. And finally, I'd like to thank Jeremy and or Scott for opening up the drainpipe under our range, because it about got washed away down there. I don't know where all that came from. That's the first time it's ever done that, and they were able to scoop that out of there and get it out of there, so they saved our range. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, yeah.
Chief, good to see you, Matt.
Thank you, sir.
Feel the matter?
I'm on the way up. Move better.
All right. Road report?
Just a few items I'll try to make quick. First item is, we had some of the roads that we chip sealed this year striped, Butter Street was striped, and Front Road was striped, the portion that we chip sealed. And I also had First Star Safety retraced Mudlock Road, which is getting really thin on the striping, it's pretty difficult to see at night. Cost for the striping was $5,863.35, and I also got a quote just to compare from A&amp;A Safety, and it was $6,506.05. And actually got that pricing through the city of Germantown, who contracts with the Miami Valley Cable Council. So, they were gracious enough to do that work at a similar cost. And also wanted to make a, also make a note that Mr. Potter was gracious enough to talk to the Dubs Company about paying for the railroad delineation on the street, and apparently got them to cover the $700 that it cost to have the railroad markings put back on Butter Street. And I do appreciate that, and I wanted to thank the Dubs Company, other group for that. So, I'll put together a bill and with a copy.
You sent that to me?
Yes.
And I sent that on to Matt.
Okay, good. So, hopefully, we'll get a.
And put the, sent into the, made out to the trustees.
Yep, yep. Okay, so that should be taken care of. But I do appreciate Dubs Company stepping up to, to do that. That, that helps us out, thank you. So. Second item, the 2024 chip seal contract, as I reported last month, Ray Hensley completed that, and I did receive the, the final bill, and I need the board to approve a change order in the amount of $2,183.40. And basically, this overage was due to the fact that the patches that we had placed on Butter Street needed to be primed before they actually chip sealed the entire street. If they didn't do that, you run the risk of the patches losing all the stone, because all the liquid has absorbed into the, the fresh patches. So, that, along with the pretty big intersections that they did on Friend and Astoria and at Harrison Astoria, actually ate up quite a bit of extra liquid that, that we didn't anticipate. So, if I could get the board to approve a change order in the amount of $2,183, $2,183.40 to Ray Hensley Incorporated, I would appreciate it.
Got a resolution?
Let's make that number 60.
Okay, I'd like to introduce Resolution 2024-60 to approve a change order in the amount of $2,183.40 to Ray Hensley for the 2024 chip seal contract.
Yes. Oh, second. Any discussion of the resolution? Hearing that, I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thanks very much. Resolution 2024-60 is adopted.
Do, do a resolution for this striping contract.
No, Mark, Mark's going to take care of that with appropriations, so.
Any change in appropriations throughout the year, we accumulate those in my office, I accumulate them, I should say. And at the end of the year, then you re-approve all appropriations, including those that changed. This will be one of those that you will appropriate, approve at the end of December.
Okay, thank you.
Last thing on my agenda is, I brought up last month about changing from Spectrum Internet and phones to TSC, and I've been in quite a few conversations with TSC about our needs and how many phone lines we have, and apparently there was an extra phone line that we didn't include into it. Ended up being two hard lines that came into the township, one of them being the emergency phone outside the building, and another one was an unlisted number that the police department uses. But anyways, kind of reorganizing and regoing through some of the pricing, it, it's looking like their price is going to be a lot closer to Spectrum's than originally anticipated, but we're still going to gain that speed that we need on uploading video to the cloud where the police department stores their body cam footage. So, apparently, all of their body cam footage is.
Weekly, monthly?
Daily?
Daily uploaded, and we have just, we have the maximum amount of upload through Spectrum we can get, but through coax cable, that's all we can get, and that's, that's the problem. And since TSC is on the verge, if you didn't notice all the flags in the yard, you're on the verge of pushing fiber optics straight into the building, so that will increase our speed from, what was it, 30 megabytes to 400, so probably be 100, 100% faster uploading. And I have it at my house, and it's ridiculously fast, so I'm hoping the same thing happens here. So, other than that, that's, I think that's all I have on my report.
Do you have a question? Mark Keener, 7865 Jamaica. Are we still using any of these wo-h.r-r.com email addresses at the Street Eastern?
Yes.
So, is that going to be an issue? Because those are Spectrum type Warner cable email addresses.
Question.
So, I just thought of that the other day when I was out mowing, and I'm, there's emails, so.
What's that for?
Yeah. Hate to see anybody, because I think zoning is using that.
No, zoning is not.
Okay.
Nope.
So, it's just.
I swapped to the.
Just that's all, we're not, I sold school.
Yep. You guys.
Am I the only one?
No. I'm sure we are.
It's actually my preferred email.
Yeah. The same here, I was just trying to pull up your last meeting, though, just to see what you were sending from.
I, I use. I don't like using.
I don't like using.
I'll second that.
Now, and, and in that regard, you've all been receiving the O T A news that I forward. If you didn't already get it from them, there is now grant money out there all to switch us to DOT GO if you want to do that. So something to consider. I know the last time when we did the upgrade, when this is who I think organized it all, it was going to cost them a fortune to get DOT GO. And then there's grant money through the state to do that. So.
Okay, zoning report?
Things in zoning have slowed down, thank the Lord. Everything else is picked up. Five permits in August, storage shed on Lower Miamisburg, farm storage on Puddin Bag, a fence on Mudlin, a garage on Winddancer, a school barn on Tops. I have nothing, not their wood, no cases go for the B Z A. We don't have any zoning commission meetings coming up. Like I said, I welcome it. Trash, I'll go into the resolution, mention that, but you already took care of that for me. When you, when you get that resolution done for the tax assessment.
Does that have to go in?
I'm not sure. I'll find out soon. But as soon as you get it done, we just sent it to me. We always get it in on time. I'm not worried.
So do we have to make a resolution on that or?
Didn't you?
No.
Oh. Oh.
That was for the taxes.
You didn't already do it. Well, I thought this was, I thought that was a tax assessment. Okay, the trash assessment.
We still have to do that. I, I've given you last year's resolution. It can be exactly the same language. And the amount is thirty-five thou, small print.
I know, sorry.
Thirty-five thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. There's a.
Okay. I'd like to introduce Resil, what resolutions is going to be?
Sixty-one, sixty-one.
I'd like to introduce Resolution twenty-two-four dash sixty-one, a resolution to authorize the assessment of property owners who are delinquent as to waste disposal service charges pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section five oh five point three-three, in the amount of thirty-five thousand. Six hundred.
Five, six hundred fifty-two dollars.
And fifty-nine cents.
Second. Any discussion of the resolution? During that, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-two-four sixty-one is adopted.
Thank you. Just get a copy of that whenever you're ready with it. And thank you, guys.
Okay, trustee reports. Mr. Potter, go ahead.
Well, Ron Wine is here. He is here concerning the application we are with a little grant and which was sent to you earlier. Talking to Jeremy earlier today, he had some concerns and I talked to Ron about that. I think he's going to address those couple of concerns. See if you guys have any questions. Come on, huh?
I want to state your name and address.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Cross, Mr. Potter, Mr. Stubbs.
My name is Ron Wine. I live in Washington Township at fourteen oh one Alstead Circle. And as you may recall, the trustees were kind enough to give me the authorization to do some research and help prepare an application as a volunteer, not paid, to our Public Works Commission in the local district for Public Works Integrating Committee. I think the last time the township applied for a grant to that group was in two thousand and twelve or at least was awarded money from that group. The Ohio Public Works Commission is funded through a tax levy. I'm sorry, through a bond issue levy statewide. And then they allocate dollars to local districts per allocation to projects in their district. In our case, our district is Montgomery County, District Four. So I have met with and talked to the O P W C staff in Columbus. They've been very helpful, actually L. Rods and also locally District Four is run by, staffed by Stacy Balance, to talk about this project and some of the complexities with it and what would be the most likely opportunity for us to be successful in getting an award, a grant award. So I have put together an application. You guys had a quick chance to look at it. It's kind of a complicated process. There's a lot of scoring criteria. As most government programs, you know, it's not as straightforward as you might want. But in general, it's very highly competitive, depending on how the trustees decide to deal with the local match issue, whether you want to look at doing a loan. Those loans can be anywhere from one year to the life of the project. In this case, it's twenty-five years. It can be paid back early, no penalty. Well, there's no interest, there's no penalty. So it's basically just whether a township wants to look at its local match as a loan structured somewhere between one and twenty-five years or where the township wants to do a local match of actual cash. I prepared the application that it wouldn't be a loan, but we, the application does not have to be submitted until Wednesday. I would like to submit it, close the business Tuesday because I just don't like to wake at the last minute in case there's computer glitches or satellite goes off orbit or whatever. So the application is due no later than two, two P M. Wednesday. The total cost of the project is a hundred and seven thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars. That includes the work that would be done to stabilize the stream bank, to stop the erosion of the road in the first place, plus guardrails. The engineering firm I brought out to look at the project to do what they call a useful life estimate and also to verify that the cost was reasonable for the work. I used Choice One Engineering because I do a lot of local roads around the state and they're familiar with bank stabilization work. They felt it would be prudent for the trustees to put guardrail along that section because there's areas where the distance between the roadway and falling down about a fifty-foot steep bank is not very far, somewhere between five and ten feet. And so that's also in the cost estimate. So the construction would be eighty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Engineering costs would be approximately ten percent of that. That's recommended to do on state-funded projects, to have engineering designed on the project. That would be eighty-nine thirty and then a contingency fund of eighty-nine thirty-two. That would mean that for the township, the most optimal way to approach this that I believe for the township is to do a fifty percent match. If you do less than that, the scoring goes way down. So you can do more, but at that point, then what's it really worth going after the grant? You're going to put seventy-five percent of the money. That's the maximum amount of a local match that it can be. It's a little complicated and District Four is actually two different programs. One program is called, of course, has an acronym because it's a government program. It's called S C I P. That's the State Capital Improvement Program. That program, the local match can be either a grant or a loan. It doesn't matter because you're going to pay the loan anyway. It's your money. So the S C I P program is one specific program. The other program is called L T I P, stands for Local Transportation Improvement Project. And the L T I P funds can only be a grant match. There's no loan involved. The upside of the L T I P funds is twenty percent of that money is allocated for townships. And the other fund, there's no specific amount allocated. It's a very competitive process. I don't want, I don't want to underestimate that. So going into it, it's difficult to win. There's a lot of projects and a lot of big, bigger projects. We'll likely have one of the smallest projects submitted. Most of them are hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars. So that's also good because you get higher score for a smaller project. So there's fifteen or twenty criteria to try to balance and shuffle. I did my best job of making a recommendation to you on how we can be, I believe we can be most competitive. The timetable, I mentioned earlier, this has to be submitted by two o'clock on Wednesday. I would like to get it submitted by five o'clock tomorrow, but good. In order to do that, there's two items that the township needs to address. One is it need to be a resolution, which I think you have the draft of. It just basically authorizes either the loan or the grant and that the project can be submitted. And the second one has to do with a chief financial officer letter that says, you know, the money is, the money will be available when needed. So those are the two action items for the trustees to consider. Mr. Potter mentioned there was an issue about the right of way. And on this grant application, this work has to be either done in the right of way or within a dedicated easement next adjacent to the right of way. Mr. Potter and I met with the landowner there, Wally Stivers. He was very amenable to whatever we needed to do, granting us a conservation easement along that area or work right of way easement. He'd probably even sell the land, but didn't really, we didn't really get into that. It's not necessary. But there has to be a public interest in the land that's being worked on. In this case, to fix the problem, we can't fix it inside the standard easement because the steep slope goes down a creek and that's really the problem that's undermining that bank and road bed. And that has to be done outside of the standard easement. So we would have to get a, if we're selected, we have to negotiate a right, right of easement with Mr. Stivers. But you can correct me if, if you think I'm wrong.
No, no, thank you.
I think he was very amenable, do whatever the township needed him to do to cooperate. Let's see what else. Timetable. So submission Wednesday. The committee meets on November the sixth. They require a representative to be there from the applicant at that meeting. They go through their scoring of each project discussions. If they have questions, they want somebody there to answer questions. I would recommend that you not send me a loan to that. I think we'd be good to have a township person there. I'd be happy to go to support if need be. I'm just trying to help do what I can to see if we can secure some outside money to help fund this project. This would have to be a competitive bid project. So when the money is secured, if we're lucky enough, we're selected, then there has to be a bid to go out. The state will not really make decisions on funding until spring of twenty-five. So the money won't be available until July of twenty-five at, or at the earliest. I did not mention, but one good thing about being a small government is a German township is considered a small government in the state scheme of things. And they have another like seventeen million dollars, I think it is roughly allocated at the state level to fund small government projects. So we really get two shots at it. One's with the District Four process that will be done this year and submitted to the state in December. The second shot would be that the state, we could also resubmit under the state's Public Works Committee, Commission's Small Government Program to also have a chance of getting funded. I'm sure you have questions. I hope I tried to explain that as best I could. It's a complicated process. The scoring criteria is all over the board. I did my best to make a recommendation, I think, would give us the best chance to win.
Mr. Hold work to Jess. Question is, is the timeframe, I know you have a pretty tight timeframe, but when you want to do the work? If the money is secured, how much time is going to be taken to secure the easement? Because that seems like that's going to be the hangup is getting a survey, getting it recorded, getting it, you know, getting all.
Yeah.
Stuff that goes along with just the property done could be months.
Yeah.
Not a year.
Could be.
To get that secured.
Yeah, could be.
You know, how is that going to work into the schedule of, you know, actually doing the creek work?
Right. That's a good question. I don't have a crystal ball on that. I think we would probably have a pretty good idea in December whether we're going to have a pretty good shot at getting it or not, or at least early in twenty-four. You have at least two years to finish the work. So funding comes available in, I guess that would be July first of twenty-five. We would have until June thirtieth of twenty-seven to finish the work. So there's a two-year timeframe which tracks with the state's fiscal, fiscal years by any of them. So I think, you know, good question. I, I would hope, given Mr. Stivers' interest in cooperating and the fact that this is a kind of an easement that's not unique, just has to be surveyed out, recorded, that that should be something that could be done in, you know, six months or less, I would assume.
Well, I, and the only other question I had was, you know, and I was there when we were talking to Wally and Mr. Stivers and I don't know if anybody ever talked to him, and I could be wrong, about permanent easements. You know, most of, most of the time when we deal with something like that, it's a temporary.
Yeah, a work right away. So a work right away.
And, you know, to approach him and say, okay, now you're actually going to be giving up your rights.
Yeah, yeah.
To this property, you know, he could want compensation for that.
He possibly could, but I think what I recall him saying is, hey, I'm never going to use that property anyway. I have no problem with it if you want, you know, I probably.
You know, if, if that, if.
I'm not speaking for him. That's what he said when we were there talking.
Right.
That's exactly what he said.
If, if that were to happen, then that would be an additional cost that has to be more by the township.
It would be. And I guess the township always has the right to refuse the money in the end. So.
Right.
You're not going to sign a contract until they try to make the money available in June or July of twenty-five. So I mean, I don't know Mr. Stivers personally, but the conversation we seemed to have, he.
I, I don't.
Seemed about as cooperative as it could be. Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I can't speak for him either, but.
I've worked a lot, I've worked a lot of landowners on projects. He seemed like one of the, like what, what I didn't want to work with.
I'm with him on the fair board also. So we've talked about this multiple times.
Trying to think if there's any other questions that I didn't, I don't know if that answered.
About the. Yeah, the only other one was about the engineering there.
Yeah.
Me, even though you're volunteering your time, and I appreciate that, we have an engineering firm that has stepped in and added something to the grant application, the useful life. Now, and I talked to Joe Dura this afternoon about, you know, being the township and our, legally, our engineering firm is the Montgomery County Engineer.
Right, that's right.
We always have to go through them. We cannot sidestep around them for engineering. And I asked him, I, because I was unsure, do we need to have you approve any engineering pre-submittal to an issue two project? Or is this something that can wait until we've been awarded the money and the engineering begins?
Right.
And he was unsure because there was a difference between design bill and, there's another term we use, I can't remember what it was, two different types of engineered projects. And he was unsure and he was going to check into it tomorrow. So I don't know, you know, I just don't want to see the board sidestepping the county engineer's office.
Yeah.
You know, even though so far we have no money and, you know.
Right.
Paid no money for any of this. But I wouldn't want that to mess up the application.
Yeah.
Oh, well, you didn't go through the proper channels to.
Yeah.
Hire the engineer, have the engineer hire Choice One or whatever it was to do the useful life. So that was the only two questions that I had that I approached with, with Joe Dura, with County Engineers Office about, hey, I want to make sure we do this correctly so that we don't have any problems in the future, you know, that they kind of re-.
Well, thanks for talking to him for me. I appreciate it. All I know is that Stacy Balance actually works in the Montgomery County Engineers Office. And a lot of the other applications from Montgomery County are done by, I mean, the right of way, useful life are done by all kinds of engineering firms.
Right.
Inside and outside the county. So I had her review the application for completeness and making sure that we were crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. She never mentioned that. I'll be glad to follow up with her tomorrow and make sure. Because we always pull, we don't, we don't have to submit this thing.
Right.
So if there's some issue that either trustees don't want to do it, or there's some technicality that I've not seen or overlooked.
I would think she would know.
I would know.
But like I said, I can't remember when, when we used to do road projects, we had Kramer Associates do our engineering. And the engineer's office actually had to hire Kramers to do the engineering. They would pay Kramers and then we would get invoiced. It would just be a pass through.
Well, it may, it may work, it may work that way in the application.
I couldn't remember if it was pre-application or post-application.
I just know that no matter what happens, this has to be competitively bid.
Right.
So normally with a design build like this, you would put out a R F P. That would obviously include both the design, engineering and the construction. And if the county wants to play a role in that, they obviously will because the money's going through them anyway. So, I mean, if they're going to play a role, they're going to play a role. I don't know what it would be. I actually haven't done this before. So I've been learning on the fly, this particular application. So I can also look into that if you hear from Joe tomorrow. Can either let Mr. Potter know or me know. If there's an issue, I don't. If there's an issue, I don't believe there is, but the work that's been done, as you mentioned, was not on contract, was not paid for.
Right.
All we were, all we were really getting out of them is their engineer's seal on two documents that were required for the application.
Did Stacy give you any indication of what a awarded project was scoring in twenty twenty four?
She gave me a whole list of them, uh, of previous years. And uh, I don't remember the number, but it was a number that we could get to.
But also that was where I was going with that is how, when you rated this project, how did it compare?
It's, it's, it's competitive, uh, you know, but it's hard to tell because there's no way of knowing how many other projects are going to be submitted or how much money or
Sure.
What other townships are going to submit versus us? So.
That was one of the reasons we kind of got out of that game was
Yes.
If the local match was becoming so great, you know, we were up against Kettering and
Yeah.
Big county engineer's office and all these places that had, you know, Miami Township, they had great deals of money and they could easily put forth fifty percent, you know, and we were going twenty five percent and a lot of that twenty five was in-kind money.
Right, right.
Really, there's not much in-kind for us to do.
Right.
On this project. I mean, we can't do the guard rail. We can't do the channel stuff.
Right, right.
There's really not a lot.
Right, good point. Yeah, it's, it's a very competitive process. So I don't want to give the impression we're a shoe-in, but we do have two bites at the apple. Both locally and at the state level, since we're a small government. And I want to reiterate, there's two issues to consider about here about how we do this, how you choose to do this application. The local match that I recommended was fifty-three, five ninety-one, fifty-three thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars. That could be either taken as a loan. If it's taken a loan as a loan, then that means we could only qualify for the skip state capital improvement pran, program portion of the grant funding. If the fifty-three, five ninety-one was taken as a local cash match, then we could qualify for both. And what I mean by both is that's the local transportation improvement program money. If we don't specify, they're going to put us wherever they want to put us, which is fine. But I think the decision that you need to make from a financial perspective is whether you want to think about the local match in terms of a loan or in terms of pulling money out as a grant, uh, a local, local cash match.
We don't, we don't have that, so.
I understand. I didn't say you did.
Yeah, I'm just, we don't have fifty-three thousand dollars sitting around.
Well, let me address that if I did. Unfortunately, I was hoping I could say to you, let's use the remaining ARCA money. But since the grant won't be awarded until spring. If we allocated it for this purpose and we didn't get the grant. Then we would have no further ability to allocate that money to another project. So we would end up going back to the federal Department of Treasury. But you have really built up the general fund over the last few years. And currently it has three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the general fund. It can be used for any purpose. It can be used for this purpose if you wish to do so.
It's never going to be any cheaper than it is.
We can go get the loan. We can do it for twenty-five years. Approximately, I think it's two payments a year.
Mm-hmm.
So approximately twelve hundred and fifty dollars every six months. I really would prefer not having to deal, and my predecessors for the next two and a half decades would probably prefer not having to deal with a loan.
But it can be paid off earlier.
It can be paid off anytime, zero percent.
And also, also I don't mean to interrupt, but it doesn't, it can be anywhere between one and twenty-five year term, just just as a point of reference.
Yeah, you can do anything you want because with zero percent.
It's good, it's good, it's a good rate.
You can pay it the day after we take the loan.
Right.
But if that's going to restrict us to only one bite of the apple. That's a little we just cut our chances possibly in half. I don't know.
Well, it, to some extent, less, less of a chance. I really can't tell you where it's half or two-thirds or one-third. I don't know. But I do know that that pot of money has a twenty percent allocation for townships if you do put up a grant, you put up cash. So your chances certainly are better. But it doesn't guarantee, still don't guarantee.
Don't they, don't they give you points for taking a loan also?
It doesn't, the, the point system, a lo- loan or a grant or a cash match locally are the same. The only difference is the state capital improvement program is the only one that allows a loan. And the, the local transportation improve, project, project program can only be a cash match. They don't allow, they don't allow loans. So that's guessing, yes and yes.
So my final thought on this whole subject is what do we give up? If we don't take a loan, we, we use our cash. And of course, what we're going to give up is the interest on fifty-some thousand dollars over whatever number of years we want to take this thing out. Currently, we're somewhere pushing five and a half percent with Star Ohio. Realistically, by next summer, we're going to be probably four and a half to five. Let's just go with five percent. It's going to cost us twenty-five hundred dollars the first year and slowly less and less as we start to pay off a loan. So that is a cost to the taxpayers. So it's a it's, what do you want to do? I mean, you have the cash if you want to use it. If you want to borrow the cash. We will make more money on the cash we don't spend through Star Ohio. And as the rates drop over the next few years, I don't expect that we're going to see them in quite a while. Going back to where they were pre-COVID, which was virtually close to zero percent. So those are the, those are the decisions you get to make and I don't have to. But as a personal standpoint, I would say I'd rather see us use the cash. Reduce the, the loan paperwork. And also reduce what the auditors are going to look at when they come in every two years to audit us. Because one of the things we have to put into our annual report as well as go through the audit is whatever loans we have outstanding. I'm looking forward to when we no longer have the water and sewer loans for that very reason.
And, and when would we have to put up the money?
Next.
July of twenty-five, probably.
July twenty-five, that's six months. That's nine months from now. We are making ten thousand dollars a month. So five of the months between now and then, we would have fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the interest only, not touching the principal. And we still have three more months.
The only other question I had more of was as far as the loan's concerned, is that going to, not that we're big on taking a lot of loans. But does that affect our loan income ratio? Because I know we can only borrow so much, a certain percentage of our income. Is that a correct statement?
You know, I do not have an answer for you on that. I, I don't know what I don't even know that there is a restriction. So I'm going to trust you on that one.
I thought there was a percentage.
When we look at the loan, we originally started out with the water and sewer just was several multiples
Right.
Of what this one would be. So
Oh, yeah.
I don't think this.
Like I said, I don't expect us
I don't think this.
It's just something to think about.
But if you had a major road project, right, and there is that restriction, yeah, I mean, it would impact it to an extent. But we could also pay it off out of the general fund at that time. Uh, I, I don't think this is anything other than a general fund expense. And I don't think this is a road expense. I mean, it would be if we had to replace the road. But I don't think.
So later we'll.
But I don't think what we're talking about now is a road expense.
Yeah.
Question on the application. It says percentage. What percentage of the community will be served by this project? It's marked twenty-five to forty. And then it also says there's a hundred and seventy-seven cars per day that go down this road. I'm not sure how we got the twenty-five to forty percent number.
I guessed at it.
Okay.
How many? I mean, it's hard to figure how many residents actually drive, you know, you have a traffic count of a hundred and seventy-seven a day times three sixty-four, right? I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
You know, you know, the population of township, it's hard to tell which people from the township drive that road. I mean, you can't. So it's just, it's just.
A shortcut.
It's a shortcut. I've been, I've been on it. I know it's used. I mean, uh, I don't think I could defend that number versus any other number other than a hundred percent. I mean, I, it's a guess. Best guess. I think it's reasonable considering a hundred and seventy-seven people a day times three sixty-four. It's a lot of people on that road.
Uh, I would guess like five to ten percent, but that's neither here nor there. Why is the Army Corps of Engineers, why are they not responsible when it's affecting a roadway? Why, it's a, it's a navigable waterway from what I understand.
This. Is it?
Is it?
Little twin? I don't think so.
Is it not? Well, I'm still, how, how, I just don't see, again, behind this conversation a year ago, whenever you were here, it's how, we we're spending, we're being asked to spend money on the creek.
Right.
But why, why are there not people higher up on the food chain than us that are responsible for this project? Why does it fall on us who has by far the smallest budget, by far the least amount of money? We're being asked to spend fifty-plus thousand dollars on a, on a roadway project. On a road that a hundred and seventy-seven cars drive on a day. If we're going to spend uh, fifty or a hundred thousand dollars for the whole project is, we can do a significant portion of our road someplace else.
Right, but the problem with this one is it's going to fall in the creek.
Maybe.
Well, okay, maybe. At some point it will.
At some time.
Gravity wins eventually. Yeah, I, there's no way to predict when it would happen. I totally agree with it. Could be next, could be tomorrow, could be ten years from now. I don't know. But I just know from my experience, the situation is such that it wouldn't take a lot to make something bad really happen over there.
Right, so I, I was out there. I went out there today after work. I climbed down the concrete even against other people's suggestion. Like I see, I see that there's an issue.
Yeah.
Okay, there's uh, cottonwood trees and it's eroded out from under. Why can't we just cut the cottonwood trees off? Rob them. And then, because I, what, from what I read here, the, the threat that we see is those trees are going to fall into the
Could.
Could fall into the creek.
Check the road with it.
If we take them down. That takes, there, there's nothing that's going to fall. The root wall is going to stay.
Right.
And keep the ground secure.
Right. That would certainly be part of the work that got done. The, the issue that's happened there, since you saw it.
Yeah.
I mean, once a stream sets up the hydrology where the floodwaters are going to the outside bend. In other words, when the creek goes way up, high-speed water is the erosive force of the stream. Nothing happens. Now it's dry. But when it floods, this high, the high water is up against that road, right? So what happens is you drop some concrete where the problem is. The creek, because it's still doing that, eats away on upstream and you drop some more concrete in there. Then it eats again, you drop some more in there. So it never stops because the creek is going to continue the way it's set up to go dead east. If you go down, if you go upstream, you'll see some logs buried in the west side of the bank. That's created this log, that's created this gravel bar that grows every year. Just keeps siltin' in, growing sycamore trees on it. So that channel, if you look back in history, it's moved almost a hundred feet. I mean, if you look back in twenty years, twenty-five years, it's moved a long way. It used to be way on the other side. If you look, if you look at that gravel bar, all the trees on it are pretty young. Within twenty years old. So the reason that that patchwork doesn't always work, not that that wouldn't help. Uh, but it wouldn't really solve the, the illness. Be like putting a band-aid on a bullet wound. Work for a while, but that creek's going to find another way to keep working up against that road upstream. That's just the way it's set up.
So if we fix it, isn't it still going to hit there?
No. No, we'll move it back toward where the channel used to be. And we'll do it in such a way by rebuilding the stream bank, it'll stay over there.
So then you're going to be going further upstream to fix the problem?
A little bit upstream. Probably a little bit further than you looked, but we have to go upstream far enough uh, to change the course of the flow so that the water, the high water will go on the other side instead of the side of the road.
So this is a question I asked you last time too. So when you fix this, what, what's the problem going to be downstream?
Shouldn't be any. We're going to put it back in the middle of the channel. It straightens out downstream.
Jeremy must be able to answer some more about the uh, Corps of Engineers. I need to talk to them multiple times about.
We get permission every time we work in any of the streams.
I know, but about them helping, about them helping or paying, putting money toward anything or.
They will do that, but I, last, I mean, we're talking twenty years ago when I was involved in any kind of grant. We're talking about doing it for, it was a ridiculous long time to get them to get anything. And everything costs ten times more money. So it, it, they almost make it so painful that it just.
Have, have you known that the Corps of Engineers doing any work at all?
Well, only on their land. I mean, if they have a lock or a dam or or a federal interest in the land, they may do some work, but normally I'm not aware the Corps has any local grant programming for this, grant for this kind of stuff. I mean, it's pretty much left to the state, local governments to fix. What the Corps does regulate, uh, Mr. Stubbs, is the floodwater. And they're concerned, I mean, their primary interest, uh, the Rivers and Harbors Act of eighteen ninety-eight is really where they get all their jurisdiction from. And that Rivers and Harbors Act was based on navigation, as you might expect it would be in eighteen ninety-eight. And so they, they regulate primarily navigable waters. But even in those navigable waters, they, they don't provide funding to anybody to do projects. They basically are a regulatory agency primarily interested in making sure somebody's not messing up the floodway. You know, causing flood problems. That's their primary.
Here a little water goes, just don't mess with, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, they don't want anybody messing with, uh, causing flooding that's not needed or restricting the flow of flood, flood flow down a, a, a wireway in general. So that's why they regulate, I guess, everything really is, as Jeremy said, you really can't do a whole lot without them A, knowing about it, or B, getting a permit to do it. I'm not sure on this project, which one that'll be. Uh, the Huntington District is pretty good about allowing certain projects to go forward if they comply with what's called nationwide permit thirteen for bank stabilization. And uh, this one might, I don't know.
I think a lot of it comes down to how comfortable we are as far as this, this project is going to work. After you've done it, is it actually going to work? Do what it's supposed to do?
Well, if we do it, it'll work. I've done a hundred and five of them in Ohio. They've all worked so far. The one down here at Park's working good, Kercher Park.
I guess that was my only, my only other question is, I know, uh, the engineer signed off on a twenty-five year useful life.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm, I'm used to doing road projects where you know, people know what useful life, like asphalt or
Right.
You know, all those kind of building materials is, on something like this. How, how did they come up with a useful life? Because I have twenty-five minimum of works. They want to see a minimum of twenty-five year useful life.
I think that's the maximum you can score is twenty-five. You can't score over twenty-five years on a road project.
Right, so I mean, is somebody, is there going to be any kind of guarantees or, you know, if you know, because I, I know when we did the project at Kercher Park, there were no guarantees. You know, there's, you know, all this stuff could wash away in a week and there's still no guarantees. And we did our best and and we did what we've done in the past and it worked and but, you know, is there any kind of guarantees using federal money or using state money? Through OBWC, since we're stating that, you know, it's going to have a twenty-five year useful life. You know, we did a pavement project that only lasted ten years. We'd be going to the contractor and
Right, right.
Raising all kinds of cane, but.
That's a good question. That's something that probably ought to be written in the RFP and if you like, I can check with Public Works to see how they handle that, if there is some.
It's just, I've never, you know, this is kind of a, a, a whole different animal.
Yeah.
Project.
It is.
That I'm not used to.
Right.
You know, we, we saw what was done down at Kercher and it seems to be doing what we expected it to. But, you know, using a public works money is, do we have to be certain that it's going to do, well, to say it's going to
Good question.
Or using state money.
Yeah, good question. How do you do a guarantee twenty-five years from now without some kind of a?
You know, you could do some sort of performance bond.
Be the only way I could think that you can be somewhat assured there would be money twenty-five years down the road.
You wouldn't do it with a whole flood product. You could put, you know, a ten-year mortgage bond on it. I don't know. I don't, I've never had to deal with that, so.
Have, have you ever had that brought up in your hundred and five project?
No. Never had one fail.
But have you ever done issue two? Have you ever used issue two money?
No. Yeah, the question is whether, what they were, they might require something. Yeah, I get your point. It's a good point. I don't know that. They might require something.
It's just way too much money. That's where I'm at. Just to be blunt.
I think it's. I think it's a useful project, so.
I mean, I think if it works, it's prob, it's, you know, it's probably a bargain. Look, it doesn't, you don't do anything and then. Way falls up. Yes, I agree. And again, uh. We do have the money available with the with the start starter accounts.
Just, just to reiterate. And I'm, I have no. Not trying to sway the board or whatever. But even if you do get. Granted awarded this month. You don't have to take it. Just. You know, if something were to change your opinion or your financial situation. You know, they could say, oh, congratulations, German Township, you were awarded fifty some thousand dollar grant money. You could tell them, nah, no thanks. You know, they don't like that. Cause they tied up a lot of money and time and. And stuff and doing it, but. That's how. Things have changed and the the entity decides. Reward that they're no longer able or they no longer want to follow through with the project. Is that correct, Ron?
Yeah, there's nothing binding until you sign an agreement, which wouldn't happen until you were selected for funding. Which probably wouldn't happen until spring of next year.
Yes.
Dub Cross, seven four 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 South Siber Road. So the guardrails, when we put guardrails up in the township, who do we normally go through for guardrail things saying that we need them?
Uh, the county usually recommends it.
So in this case, you're suggesting guardrails? Do you know how much that cost for those guardrails is in your quote?
Well, I I didn't suggest it. The engineering firm that I had looked at, Choice One Engineering out of Sydney that does a lot of. Local and township and county road work, said they really thought it was needed.
Uh huh.
And rough cost somewhere between eight and ten thousand dollars, I believe. That's what was put in the budget, what actually, what actually cost that on them.
So when that happens, when do the guardrails go up?
Last.
Last, like after the project's complete, after it's working?
Well, after all the works, after all the works done on that East Bank.
And after it works, after it's approved, that it's worked? Cause I think in the contract, didn't it say? That it's after it's proved that the project is working that they put the guardrails up? Is that what it said in there?
I I don't.
It's working as soon as it's not a rodent.
Yeah. Yeah, I, it would be last thing that would probably happen to the guardrails.
So would that, where would, would that payment also happen in July twenty five or after everything's done?
Well, I would assume under any kind of contractor, it's gonna be a, a schedule of payments. I suppose of all the money going out the door day one.
Right.
So I would imagine that would be later on in the payment schedule.
It would be then basically the last.
I think it'd be near the last.
As the, as the project progresses, the contractor. Asks for draws, you know, the the very first draw will be for engineering. And then as construction begins. Depending on the cost of the project, it might just be one draw or it might be five draws. For the school, it's probably hundreds of draws.
So the last project that was done, luckily we got money for that. It came up, um, with my calculations, twenty percent higher than what you anticipated originally. There was an extra twelve thousand dollars, and I think at the end that.
That you asked for.
That you asked for additionally?
Yeah, it turned out to be a little bit more work than we thought, but we didn't, we didn't get that, so that's.
Right, so.
But most of, most of the issues had to do with complications we had on Mudlick Road.
So, I mean, is there any guarantee that this this project won't additionally go twenty percent higher? Than what's stated?
I I I think the grant, the the project's the project, the grant's the grant. So the state's gonna fund a project based on a budget. So that that would be the budget.
What what happened on Mudlick Road? What got hit over price was, a lot of it was the. Um, the property owners, um, that we did not, he did not know about, I did not know about. And they stopped us from working and it kept his crew. Held up and not doing work for three extra days.
About that.
About three extra days. If he, if if we did not have done that, then it wouldn't have ran over.
And we don't have those kind of issues on this project for sure.
But something else would come up and we don't know what the cost of things are going to be. I mean, do you normally purchase the needed equipment? Now for something that's going to be taking place in twenty twenty five?
No.
So you wait until after it's approved?
Yeah, but the budget was based on the budget, so it's gonna be that budget.
Okay.
Yeah, I can tell you, I don't see any reason it wouldn't be that budget. Uh, so there's no obvious reason for any costs overruns or any request for. What'd you call it earlier, Jeremy, uh? Change order or?
Oh, change order.
Yeah.
Oh.
Wouldn't anticipate it. I wouldn't guarantee a thousand percent would never happen, but but highly, highly doubt it.
There's some, there's some contingency again there too.
Yeah, there's ten percent contingency, you're right. I never forgot to mention that. That's why it's also in there just in case something happens that we don't count on or. The cost standard, the cost of something changes between now and then. Those are all good questions, so.
Yes, could you tell us what your portion of payment is on that project?
It's the approximately seventy nine thousand dollars for the work that we do.
That's your portion?
If I, if we win the contract, yeah.
And then, Ron, did you say seventy nine?
I think so, yeah.
Yes. Just, I was, I had.
That might be. Yeah, cause the the other guardrails is about ten, our work's about seventy nine.
Okay, thank you.
And then engineering. So the guardrail and then engineering was on top of your seventy nine?
Uh, no, the gar, yeah, the guardrails on top of seventy nine, engineering's on top of that, and the contingencies on top of that, as Jeremy mentioned.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. I think when this first came out, was, did we start this? Was it about seventy thousand dollars? When we started to talk about this project?
It was a, it was a estimate and then they decided to put, they thought we needed guardrail. And then they decided needed engineering and then all of that stuff was added to it.
Thank you.
Good questions. Thank you.
Any other questions I can help answer?
So where does the easement from, uh, Mr. Stivers come in this process?
The easement from Mr. Stivers.
Where does it come in?
Yeah, or is it coming to all this process or is there gonna be cost involved in that or?
Shouldn't be mu, there'll be some cost involved. You have to have a survey. We could probably take it out of contingency. I don't think it's gonna be a ton of money to do that. Few thousand dollars maybe. Um. There are firms that do easements all the time that kind of specialize in them. Township decides to, Mr. Stivers decides to go that route, but she probably will. You could also consider donating it. Since he's not planning on using any of it along the stream bank. So that's another question to ask him.
Can we switch the percentage of our portion to a lower percentage?
Can, but probably be very unlikely to win.
It's part of the scoring, the the fifty percent. Anything below fifty percent.
You won't get much.
Yeah.
Points go way down after. The highest point match is seventy five percent, the next one's fifty. It goes way down after that in terms of the way it's scored.
So if we went twenty five percent match, we may get it, we may not get it, probably won't get it.
Definitely less, probably not.
Probably, but not. Certainly.
There's a problem. There's a, there's a phrase for that. We'll all just. Probably get skip or LTIP, but. Could get small government, local government, small government. Possibly, and also you can. Change the application when the small government round comes around too, so.
Right.
You could always cross that bridge later if we decide we wanna do something different, small government, but I'm assuming the small government's gonna be really competitive too. There's a lot of them in Ohio.
So why not try for the. Higher portion of them paying it now? And if it goes through, that's great for us.
Mm hmm. If it doesn't go through, that's bad for us.
Well, geez, that's a sway though.
That's certainly a trustee's decision to make. I I structured in a way I thought was physically responsible and gave us, gave the township the best chance of winning. Um, based on the scoring criteria. There are some good things in the score and criteria for us on this project in terms of. The fact that it is a safety issue, although that imminently nobody's fallen in the road yet, it's certainly one that is a safety issue, which is, which is good. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, if the township decides to do a grant versus loan. That opens up that LTIP pot, uh, Local Transportation Improvement Project pot, which has a twenty percent, um. Uh, criteria for township funding. So, you know, you could do a whole round in the SCIF pot, this SCIF pot, never fund a township. Cause as Jeremy said, you're competing with big cities and. And by the way, the county competes for this money too, which is kind of strange, but. A lot of the projects that are funded are also the county's projects, so. It's a lot of competition.
I think that, you know, one thing to consider again, if July comes around, we do get the money. And for some, whatever reason, we don't have that fifty thousand dollars available, we can. Get out of it, you know, it's.
I think that.
Like it's iron plier.
No, I think the letter that Mark has to sign, the, I think it's in front of you, the Chief Financial Officer's letter says that the money is available as a now for the project.
Yeah, and it is.
Yeah, I think it says will be available. You might be right. Might say will be available. You might be right. Because you don't, we don't have any money now, that's the end of the year.
Yeah.
But next year, we know that we're gonna get certain amounts.
The local cash match, I have to say, is available.
Yeah, you do. Yes, it's available.
Loan, it says it will be.
When it says it'll be available when it's required.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, I would assume like anything else, the world changes, something bad happens. I mean, there there's no fine or clawback provision or. Any sort of thing about that, but you're basically saying have the money now, expect there to be money available then. I think that only requires the township not to spend it. You know, prior to that time.
And if we do.
Or if we do, we pull ourselves, we pull ourselves out, yeah.
So it's no fun.
Well, I'm worried about signing my letter at all. One thing I do think needs to be changed is I think it needs to be less than twenty five percent on the percentage of the community to be served in this project. I can be accurate.
I can change that. It'd just be a lower, be a lower score, but.
Well, I.
I have no. I I think that is honest. I I could, it could be ninety percent. I don't know. I mean. Hundred seventy seven cars, eight times three hundred sixty five. How many people in the township?
Three thousand.
Right, oh, that's my math on that.
Well, that, that's a, a lot of people comes from town. That's a shortcut.
Yeah, that's.
That's.
Includes the city.
Yeah, that's a, it's a strong test for the city.
Oh, yeah, so you're at eight thousand. So you're even less than. No, we're in three thousand. You have a hundred and seventy seven cars per day. We're about three thousand residents, but how many school children? How many buses?
How many buses do they do that?
Probably one in the morning for the high school, one in the afternoon.
You think they're splitting hairs here, Jake?
Well, I think we're overexaggerating to get points.
It was my best guess.
Well, and I appreciate, I appreciate.
Sixty four thousand people going up and down the road beside school buses, so. What percentage? I don't know. I, it's the trustees' call. I'll change anything you want. I don't care.
I I think just leave it like it is.
I think there's enough exits on this to, we're covered. Now, if things do not work out, if we don't. Something happens in the township that we, you know, don't have the money. I think that again. If you look long term, it's probably a bargain and it's probably gonna get worse.
It'll absolutely get worse.
Well, if you're ready to move to legislation. We will definitely do this assay resolution. And you will modify whether or not you want it to be a loan or cash payment. Um, and I think that's in. Okay, Ron told me here. Does this need to change? I'm not looking at it, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Just out there, um.
Well, I guess the one question I do have about the resolution itself. The workwise system, is that just one of the two now that we're gonna fall for with each other?
The workwise system?
Whatever.
I I apologize. I don't know where you're looking. I apologize.
Section one.
Yeah. That just authorizes to me, as you're represented, to submit the application. The workwise system is the software that you use to have submit all applications.
So. There were two though that were gonna go after, two different kinds of.
Yeah, that will happen. Well, that'll happen depending on whether or not the township wants to put up grant money versus loan money.
But they both would go through this workwise system?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I would just simply change in the application that the local matches is a, is a cash, not a loan.
I guess there's nothing actually in the legislation that says whether you're gonna do an assay. Load or using our cash. There's also nothing in the legislation that says. The percentage. Now, the percentage is in the application. But you probably want to include. Past part of this resolution. Percentage you want to match and how you wanna pay for that match. If you're ready to do the legislation, we're gonna make that number sixty two.
Will you want to come on? Um. Brief. That's number sixty two.
Yes.
And it's for. Uh, us paying for. Uh, general funds.
Choose one and see if you guys have. You're the one making the, um. Moving, making the motion to approve the right, the resolution.
I wanna make a motion to approve the resolutions of. A a resolution authorizing online to pre-prepare and submit application to participate. The Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement. And or local transportation improvement programs and execute contracts as part. Whereas the state capital improvement program and local transportation improvement program both provide financial assistance and local. Political subdivisions of capital improvements and public infrastructure and. Whereas German Township is planning to make capital improvements. To Little Twin Bank Substabilization and whereas the infrastructure. Improvement here herein above described as considered to be a priority need of the community. And is qualified sub to under the OPWC programs. Now therefore it is resolved by the. German Township Board of Trustees, section one, that we're online. Serving as the liaisons of to German Township. Board of Trustees is hereby authorized to submit application and workwise system to the OPWC funds as described. And Lou Potter, member of the Board of Trustees, will serve as chief executive officer. For the project and authorized to enter any agreements as may be necessary and appropriate for them to, uh, obtaining the financial assistance. And the German Township trustees will, uh. Pay for their match program, matched funds out of general funds.
What percentage of?
Fifty percent.
I'll add that, those words into, um. Section one. So. Is there a second to the resolution?
I'll second.
Is there a discussion of the resolution? It's too much money.
Can Lou be the fiscal or financial officer?
He is not.
Chief Executive Officer.
Which is chief. He will be the, uh, Chief Executive Officer. I am the financial officer. Any other discussion?
At what point do you wanna hear about a comment online?
Do you have people online who wish to comment?
Yeah, if you're in the chat.
Oh, in the chat? Go ahead, read the chat.
Abigail Haldenis said, I am one hundred percent against this. I agree with everyone, Mr. Stubbs. Everything Mr. Stubbs has said. This is brought up tonight and need to be signed tomorrow.
Is that the only comment?
Mm hmm.
Any further discussion? I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
No.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Uh, the vote is two in favor, one, one against. Resolution twenty twenty four sixty two is adopted.
I think you're on.
Thank you.
Uh. Have any more questions?
No, I just need, Mark, I'll need to double back with you tomorrow to get the two documents, so I can upload them to the account.
Prepare the resolution, adding language that just says fifty percent, or can cash. Come up with some words.
Okay.
And then I'll prepare the letter, both on letterhead, so you'll have a vote, perfect, thank you. And I'll email to you, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
That's good, my pleasure, thank you.
Thank you for submitting the application.
No problem.
All right, uh, Mr. Ari, anything else for your.
I, I do.
No, go ahead.
Uh, the pool, uh, we had a pool, um, meeting. We did have a pool meeting, not much going on, just the end of season, getting the numbers together to see what their budget is for some improvements for next season. Uh, the park, I attended the park board meeting, um, not much going on either, still trying to figure out exactly what the needs is for the AED and the parks. They are, um, going to get the committee together for the two hundred and fiftieth centennial. Mark was unavailable to come this, have come down to the meeting, uh, this past meeting due to conflict, it's good. Uh, new playground equipment was installed, uh, at the Hillcrest Playground that was gotten with the grant money. MMI, uh, all seven of the six and a half foot by eight foot, six by six squares, which is, uh, six by six timber squares, have been placed for the memorials of the KIA cadets. Stone has been placed in three of them, Ben will get his stone in the other four sometime this week. We plan on having the boulder set before the press festival. Um, I went and talked to SRM about a large boulder to be placed at the bottom of the hill, or an entrance marker for the MMI park. They're going to donate and deliver and set an eight-ton boulder that's approximately eight foot by eight foot by four foot high. Do that after the press festival. Um, I have been hearing some questions or some grumblings from the, some city council members, um, about the MMI. I've tried to contact them or have them call me and, and they, I've not been able to do that, so I went down to the council meeting, and during the work section, I was asked if any of the, if any of them had questions or concerns, and got no response. So while I had the floor, I, on, I'm on the oversight committee for the parks, and we'll be having a levy vote in the next couple of years, uh, with a four-mil levy, fire EMS levy vote. This year, I was concerned about park levy passing. And what plan B was, if that didn't pass, and maybe be prepared for it not to pass, and to take some measures for that. Mostly got no response from the council, one member seemed to be aggravated that I brought it up. But they know. And that's confused my report.
You're becoming one of the club, if you're irritating him.
Yes.
Can I jump in there for the parks for a second? Um, that cross, sorry, of my address, um, the playground at Hillcrest. You said that was with grant money?
Yes.
That was fifty-fifty, right? It was parks money, grant money?
Um, I'm not for sure of what the, what the, I don't think it was fifty-fifty, but it might have been, I'm not.
And it was.
I think it was eight thousand grant and four thousand coming to the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so some parks money was put in there.
Yeah.
Now, an AED have to be put there too, since there's.
Very possible. If, that's what they're trying to figure out, because technically, they could have to one have, might have to be one of the MMI. So that, that's what they're trying to figure out, uh, is what do they mean by all parks? So that, that's, that's a good question, and that's what they're still trying to figure out. And they're hoping, since the state is mandating this, that now they will have some grant money um, to, to go toward this, is what they're hoping.
Did you want to talk about the restrooms at Kersher, or did you want me to?
You can talk about it.
Um, the restrooms at Kersher were not usable a couple of times while I was up there, and I brought this up at a, a previous meeting, and then there was a meeting called at the city building, and what come of that was they did not get the tank cleaned out before this year's baseball games. And the response that I heard was that there wasn't funding for that. Am I after it pretty much?
Uh, I think, um, no, I, I don't think that's that, um, they, they, that's, uh, has nothing to do with that. I think they, it's also said it, and if you remember, they hadn't had any problems with it in the past. So it was a surprise when it happened the first time. And then it was, when it happened again the second time, uh, he, he just wasn't going to deal with, so it's actually not two. Who was Andrew, was that his name?
But he was there, but he wasn't the one that said that, it was one of the parks people.
Okay. Um.
Ben?
Ben, uh, Ben, he is in charge of the parks, um, from the city, but it's just a few hundred dollars that, that, it's, it's absolutely not a reason to, to not do it, it just.
He said it was funding, so I, I know that there's no money in parks right now.
There's, there's five hundred dollars, so that's not, that is, like I said, from my understanding from Andrew, it had never happened before, so it was no reason to pump it out. This might, well, my.
My understanding to what I heard, just from the people, the person I talked to in the city, is they had always pumped it out previously. They didn't this year because of funding. They didn't have enough money, so, that being said, they're going to take care of it and pump it out next year. We'll see if that works.
I think there is a, I, I'm talking to Ben and a couple of others, I'll, I'll talk more to Jonathan about it. But what that is, is it's a, it's a septic system that they just, used to be, had leach field in it, and now it's hooked to it and just goes to a pump station.
Is you know.
So when this, the solids gets in this, and it gets into the pipe, it doesn't work very well because it's just, it's not made to do that, that way. So my hope and, and plan, by talking to them, is to putting a like a waste pump, it's like, uh, what they use for, like, it's almost like a lift station pump. And then you will put that in there, and then you'll pipe it directly into the, into the pipe that goes to the lift station. And it's sealed up, and then that will pop out like a, like a, like a, a salt pump. So when that gets in there, gets so much in there, it'll pump out, shoot it down there.
Grinds up the.
Grinds it up and shoots it down the, down the pipe. Uh, the, the, those pumps are, are not that expensive.
Well, that will cost money, and there are only five hundred dollars in there, and we still.
Yeah, it would, it would, there won't be no problem for that, there won't be no problem for that. I'm on the oversight committee, so I don't think there'll be a problem for that to be done.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's that way.
With spending so much money for the creek, as we have other big things coming up, the parks still has to pay back two years because of the paving that they did that they didn't have money for, that they owe the city.
Absolutely.
And we also have a fire EMS levy coming up that we don't know if it's going to pass, so we could have to use some of our general fund to bolster those things, if there's not enough money.
They don't only use the fund money. The fund money that we're holding. Is that what you're talking about? Holdback fund money. I wonder why we would use our general fund money? Am I talking out of school here?
No, we wouldn't use general fund.
Yeah, we'll use general fund.
Could we use parks funds money, is it for that creek project?
No, we didn't, we didn't use park fund money.
It's a lot.
Definitely, absolutely not, it's not a park problem, it's a creek problem. Causing. Just like the creeks causes a road problem, it's not, it's not a road problem to the creek, makes it a road problem. Trying to stop the creek, I'm trying to stop the parks, I'm trying to stop the roads. Having to deal with the creek, the creek needs to be its own problem. Have its own maintenance and have its own, so it doesn't cause a road problem, and it doesn't cause a creek problem. That's, that's quite, yes.
Hey, Mr. Stubbs?
Just a few things tonight, cemetery, uh, the high school actually contacted me today about focus on your future day, so we're going to try it for the third time, hoping for better weather this time, um, so tomorrow I will email the high school back, asking for four to eight students, preferably in an even number, and uh, Keith has a plan for them. Though this will be election day, by the way, so first of November, but, um, hopefully that works out this time, we've tried a couple of times, and it's been poor weather both times. Uh, the cemetery received a grant for twenty-five hundred dollars to repair foundations. Uh, we've had several stones on the hill. Um, pretty much if you face the cemetery on the right side, on the steep part of the hill, where the foundations have become unlevel and the stones have fallen off, uh, some of them bigger than we can handle, so we applied for a grant to, uh, have a company come in, fix the foundation, reset the stones, and we're finishing the paper, we've been granted the money, we just need to finish the paperwork, uh, to get that. While I'm on the cemetery, I would like to introduce a resolution, which would be, um.
Sorry, if you're good.
Sixty-three. Sixty-three. I would like to introduce, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-three, a resolution to make September twenty-first, two thousand and four Philip Nagley Day in German Township, um, as a show of support for, uh, the Daughters of the Revolution, who are, are having a plaque put on his Revolutionary War grave at the Germantown Union Cemetery, um, and thanking Mr. Nagley for his patriotic services during the Revolutionary War.
Second?
Sure. Do you second it, Dr. Cross? Any discussion of the resolution? Hearing none, I'll call the roll, Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
And very much, resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-three is adopted.
Sorry, I didn't have that written out ahead of time, I just got this tonight, so.
I guess handed it to you.
Right, so.
That's pretty easy.
Apologies on that.
Philip Nagley Day in German Township.
On September twenty-first.
Nice, easy resolution.
And I would like to invite anyone who is willing and able to join us at ten o'clock on September twenty-first at Germantown Union Cemetery, as they unveil the plaque, I saw it tonight, it looks very nice, so um, that will be September twenty-first, ten o'clock at the cemetery. Uh, discussion tonight about the wall out front and what we can do to repair it, so that's going to be ongoing in the next couple of months. Trash. Just for clarification purposes, I've reached out to Rumpke, I've talked to Shawna, I've talked to, uh, Kristen and Jackson Township. All households must have trash pickup. Rumpke mistakenly told people, residents in our township that they didn't have to. Uh, it is my understanding that Rumpke recontacted them and told them they were wrong, and that we do have, they do have to have Rumpke uh, or trash pickup, which our contract is currently through Rump, through Rumpke, so it has to be Rumpke. Also a clarification, if a resident has a Rumpke dumpster, and they do not use trash roadside service, it has to be Rumpke, because that's who our contract is with. Their trash bill can be suspended while they're paying for the dumpster, so.
It has to be a.
It has to be a Rumpke dumpster because our contract is with Rumpke, so if any resident asks going forward, if you have a Rumpke dumpster, we can suspend your trash roadside pickup, as long as you provide proof to us you have a Rumpke dumpster. Um, also on trash, uh, talking to a Preble County resident, he lives someplace between Camden and Grattis, his quarterly bill for Rumpke is a hundred dollars per quarter. Well, ours is seventy, and it's unfortunate, and no one likes it, and I understand that. If we were in Preble County, it would be much, much higher, so a hundred dollars per, that's thirty dollars a quarter right now, that more or less than Preble County residents. Um, I don't know if anybody's had more complaints on the trash lately, but, uh, Mr. Harfter was the one that I was sent that had been misinformed by Rumpke, and they were supposed to contact him.
I, I talked to Mr. Harfter also.
Okay.
And I know that Shawna talked to him.
Okay, so hopefully, at this point, because all I got was the tail end of that email con, I didn't get the beginning, I just got the end of that email conversation, so I don't know if it was already discussed, but Rumpke, uh, when I talked to Chandra at Rumpke, she was to have them contact him and straighten out the misinformation that they had.
They didn't say the name of Mr., Mr. Jones.
They did not mention him. I don't know if he's contacted them or not, but I know Mr. Harfter has given wrong information from them. So. Um, just one question for next month's meeting, since confrontation seems to be the thing around here lately. Uh, can we have Metro Parks representative come talk about their upcoming levy?
Sure.
Okay, I'll invite somebody from Metro Park for the next meeting. Uh.
Stir the fire.
I think that concludes my report.
Thanks, Jake. I just have one very little thing, I attended nine-three-twenty-four Germantown Council meeting, the highlights, the highlight I'm going to talk, need to talk about. They passed a resolution to impose a twenty-four-month moratorium on all used cannabis operators within the city. That is all I have. Any old business? Any new business?
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned at eight forty-six.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
That's why we vote. Yeah.